Hear from the public. So Paul, what do you have to say tonight?
Well, just I wasn't kidding when I said, you know, I, I still want to see the buildings get open somehow, even for a limited use. Um, I think that's important and I don't think that we're serving the town by leaving them closed. And I don't know, that's my, my opinion. It's, I mean, everybody's entitled to their own opinion. That's my opinion.
Yes, it is. Okay.
So, and I know it's on the agenda and I know you got, you, you have been discussing it. Um, and right now unfortunately, we're swinging the other way within the state and a lot of states are so, you know, now we might be back at the point where we're going to have to not be open for a little while. Consequently, um, I think it should have been opened earlier, but that's water over the bridge, so to speak.
If I could just ask you a question about that.
Go ahead.
What is it you're not getting in service because the building is closed?
Um, well, for me personally, the only thing I didn't get as of right now is, uh, when I had to do my personal property tax declaration. Um, I, I normally would go in the building and have the notary, uh, cause some parts of it have to be notarized. So, um, that was not available. So I had to go to another facility to do that, which at the time was my bank, which is currently also closed.
Did they say why it wasn't available?
Uh, you know, I didn't even ask because the building was, I mean, I didn't call, I did call Kara and make an appointment to drop it off. So she could give me a receipt for it.
Right.
But because the building was closed, I, I didn't even pursue trying to get in touch with, um, Karen or anybody else. I just, it was, in all honesty, it was just easier to go to the bank and do it that way.
So you didn't really, so if I understand correctly, you didn't really ask anybody to notarize.
I didn't because the building is, if you look at the town website, it says the building is closed. So.
The off, but, but the people in the offices are not.
Right, but I mean, I, I, I'm not sure how they would do that. Like, I, I know Kara met me outside at that point, uh, to do that, but yeah.
That's what the others would have done as well.
Yeah, so, uh, I don't know. Um, but then that's the, I guess it's not funny. It's just, it, it's kind of hypocritical that I could go to the bank to do that and have them do it in person. Cause obviously to do a notary, you have to have show ID and all this other stuff. And in this case, they actually, the state changed the paperwork, so I had to take my wife with me as well. So there was two of us that had to do it. But in general, uh, some other things, and I had asked Karen, or actually Sheri, I think about it. Um, like for instance, if I was interested in a piece of property, uh, how would I look that stuff up? Some of the information is available on the website. Uh, Sheri had directed me to it. It was just a general question. Um, I actually asked it during one of your executive sessions, uh, while we were, Sheri and I were kind of sitting here staring at each other on Zoom, so. But I, I can't speak for anybody else. I don't know what other people need from the town hall. Uh, if, I, I know that people are buying houses like crazy, so I can't imagine anybody that needs a title search or, it is interested in a property or a house that wants to look up information themselves. How that, how you go about that, um, looking at maps or anything like that. Again, uh, we're lucky in Ashford right now, uh, if you know how to navigate the websites, you can find a lot of that information online. Um, so that's a good thing. Um, but sometimes it's good to be able to ask. And you know what? I, I, I live in town, but if I was moving to a town, I want to meet the people that, that work in that town building. Um, and quite frankly, the other problem is, is like, you know, with the transfer stations open, the DPW still operates. I understand the risk very well. Um, there's things you can do that, so people could come in and, even if it was by appointment, and I, and that's another one thing I, I had a, addressed during this whole mess was I had to get some copies of birth certificates. I, I don't even know, uh, I just made an, I had to go to Wyndham, so Wyndham required an appointment, which is fine. I understand that. So they could do it, basically went in and signed in so they could have a contact trace. Again, uh, no problem with that, but it needs to be accessible. And I get, I, I can't speak for everybody. Like I said, my opinion. And since I live in town, you know, I'm just voicing my concern, I guess. And, and the other thing I wanted to touch on was, I think it was the last meeting when, um, the, the raise for Christine's position came up for the Selectmen's Administrative Assistant. And, um, from a taxpayer.
Actually, that one isn't on the agenda tonight.
Okay, but.
Don't we just speak to the things that are on the agenda?
Uh, I thought that was.
You can go, you can go on if you want, but that's.
I just thought it was only for special meetings. I don't know. Is Bill on the, is Bill still there or did he fall off?
Yeah, he's on the call. But it's just that, that subject isn't on the agenda. That's all I said.
Right. I just.
Bill, I cannot hear you. Can anybody else hear Bill? I'm up to maximum on the volume.
I can, cause he's on my phone.
Oh, you can put your phone up to the speaker if you want.
Could, could we have Bill, if he's just going to be on the phone, could we have him call directly into the meeting and I can give the link? I mean, I could.
Did you hear that Bill?
Yeah, I, I'm still checking on the computer, cause I seem to have two different, um, meeting ID numbers.
Okay.
It's.
Nine, nine, one, nine, nine, one. Seven, six, nine, five. One, seven, nine, eight. That's the right meeting number.
Okay, and I, I did that, and it's coming up with that, wait for the host to start, and it's saying Board of Selectmen's meeting, ten, nineteen, twenty.
Should be saying November sixteenth. He's looking at the wrong one. He needs to look at the site. He's looking, he must be looking at one in an email. Because I went to the site and it worked.
I just, I just punched in the number that, that Chris gave me.
Nine, 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 one. Seven, seven, six, nine, five. One, seven, nine, eight.
Start over and I'll try to come in again. Nine, nine, one, seven.
Six, nine, five. Six, nine, five. One, seven, nine, eight.
I'm getting that same window.
Sounds like he has a computer problem.
All right, do me a favor. Bill, hang up with me. Go on the town website. Go to ashfordtownhall.org. Go to agendas and agendas and minutes.
That's where I started, but I'll, I'll.
Selectment. Indication that that's the, you're using the right one.
There should be an agenda for November sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Did you find it?
Agenda for eleven sixteen.
Yep.
Will you want me to click on, just click on that?
Click, yeah, click on that.
Okay, and it's telling me to download the documents.
Download it and click on it. When you click on it, it'll open it up.
Did you hear Catherine? Click, click on, download. It'll open it up.
It's a PDA.
And on the bottom it says, join Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
And then just click on the link.
Same thing. Please wait for host to start this meeting. How did Paul get in?
Hey, what, how did you get in, Paul? Through the website?
Exactly that way. Yep. That's exactly how I did it. Yeah.
Through the website.
Christine, could you give him the?
I'm getting that same screen. Please wait for host to start this meeting. And then it says Ashford Board of Selectmen, ten, nineteen, twenty.
Yeah.
That's the wrong, that is the wrong, uh, agenda.
That's, there should be a Nov- on November sixteenth, two thousand.
That's what I clicked. That's what I clicked.
So let me ask Bill, when you did this, you were at the town website and you were looking at minutes and agendas?
Say it again, Kathy, you're breaking up all.
I couldn't hear him.
Let me call in on my regular phone.
Okay, we'll talk, we'll talk you through.
Or I'm not hanging. Yeah, I won't hang up.
I've been on the other end of this, so I know what it feels like.
No, it's never fun.
No, it isn't. But I think Paul, um, some of the answers that, um, you may have been looking for, we'll be able to talk about when we get to.
Right, like I said, I know it's on the agenda. I'm just, I, I.
I got it. I, I wrote down everything you said. Okay, and it's recorded. And just so you know, the people who work in here miss that day to day, regular face to, let me finish. Finish the face to face contact just as much as everybody else does. Um, so don't think they love being sequestered in here because they don't. Uh, they are looking out for themselves and each other and their families.
Even, even I miss you, Paul.
Yes, and I do too. Didn't we give you a nickname the last time?
Yeah, you did, but I don't remember what it was.
Nothing affectionate. I know it was. Just.
The, uh, the other option would be having, to have him go to zoom.com on his browser.
And just want to do a copy paste?
And then enter the, put in, enter the meeting ID by hand rather than clicking a link.
Right, wait a second. He just entered it again.
The rest of us are able to get in.
Huh. Meeting has not started.
Okay, can Bill do this over the phone? We'll just talk him through? Or is it that he just can't get in even on the phone? Okay, I can tell a funny story while we're waiting.
Christine, you want, you want to have him go to, to zoom.com?
Huh?
Zoom.us, rather.
Okay, hold on, Bill. All right.
I don't know, too.
John?
Yeah.
Can he dial that six, four, six number?
Uh, hold on.
He should.
Let me, let me double check the number.
I've done that before.
It's the, uh, yeah, absolutely. Six, four, six, eight, seven, six, nine, nine, two, three.
Yeah, it's a phone number.
Yeah.
All right, Bill.
That's the number I'm dialing.
Okay.
And, and the right number is the nine, five, 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 one, one?
No.
No, just dial one, one, six, four, six number.
All right, Bill, 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 stop.
Until the, yeah.
Take your personal phone.
All right, all right. Now wait a minute. I just did that and I dialed that one, six, four, six.
Yep.
Let me do it again.
Okay.
Okay.
Doing it from my personal phone.
All right.
Now the right meeting ID number is which one?
Nine, nine, one.
Okay.
Seven, six, nine, five. One, seven, nine, eight.
His other option is to come to this office. That wasn't the correct ID.
So I, I just want to point out that I just got on using that same process on myself. You'll notice there's a four, five, five number. That's me. So that works.
He's unmute.
All right, Christine, hang up.
Chris, you can hang up on him.
All right, um, so I asked him to unmute. Hopefully, you can do that.
Bill, would you unmute?
Star six, I believe.
Can you unmute him?
I can't. I can only ask.
I did.
Okay. I, one of the issues is the meeting ID number on our posted agenda is not correct.
Actually, the rest of us use the one that's on the posted agenda that's on the website.
And that's the nine, five, 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 one, one, six, seven, nine, two?
No, that's not the one on the website.
That was the October meeting. This is the November meeting.
Okay.
Okay, we're glad you're here. Let's pick up where we left off. So, we're glad you're here. Let's pick up where we left off. Uh, how about this? I'll take us through the briefing at this point. Yes?
Yes, and my only comment was, I know Paul, I don't believe was finished with his comments. And since it's on the agenda, I'd be glad to add him to the conversation, uh, Catherine.
Uh, actually, he did do, go through quite a few comments. I wrote them down.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
It was on the October agenda.
Okay.
So Catherine, I'll just write a letter to you and CC Bill, uh, with, with my concerns about that. All right, thank you and.
Yeah, and if you would, please, please be clear about what you were not able to do that you would normally do in what the task you were trying to accomplish. That's what, that's where I'm looking for the gaps. Okay?
Right, okay.
Excellent.
Just, just a point of interest here. This is not a special meeting, correct?
No, it's not.
We can add things to the agenda.
But we're going to talk about this as part of old business.
Okay. Well, I think that was the point I was trying to make, that if we're, it's on the agenda to discuss. I would have no objection to adding Paul to the discussions.
That's fine. Okay, so, uh, let's move on. Can we move on to the briefing at this point? Because we're not down to old business yet.
That's fine.
Which is talking about our COVID nineteen policy, okay? Uh, okay, so we have some very good news, very, very good news. I'd like to thank Chris because she did the work for this and got, uh, um, gathered all the troops and got all the information and put this through. We have been awarded a steep grant in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for infrastructure improvements at Pompe Hollow Park. Uh, the grant is to be administered by DOT. We should have some flexibility on when this project can be done. Actually, it's a two-year grant, which means that rather than going to the Board of Finance and this year, we can actually add it to the capital improvement plan for next year. And this, these are the infrastructure improvements that are, uh, near the senior, uh, housing. So again, I want to thank Chris for pulling that one, uh, out of her hat for us. Uh, the grant application includes a five thousand dollar match from the town, which will be for in-kind services. Those would DB, DPW and engineering related to the project. Chris, did you have anything to add to this one?
Nope.
Okay, we also have received, are receiving a historic documents pres- preservation grant. Um, that's going to the town clerk. That's for fifty-five hundred dollars.
Yes.
Okay, and then, um, air handling system filters, Nutmeg Mechanical, our maintenance contractor uses MERV eight or nine. And Chris, could you help elaborate on this one?
Bill had asked what kind of air filters we use.
Yep.
And I queried Nutmeg and they told me that we use, that they use either MERV eight or MERV ten.
Does that clarify for you, Bill?
Well, uh, as the state DAS, we are recommending, uh, MERV thirteen or comparable. Some systems will not accept that sophisticated of a filter. That's why I was asking that.
Okay, thank you.
It may be that our system won't accept it. Did, did they say why, Chris, or just that that's what they're using?
I believe that that's what fits in our system.
Okay.
I can ask him about MERV thirteen.
Yeah, MERV thirteen is a, is a bit more expensive. But as I said, it's a, it's a bit more of a, uh, it, it, it works better than, it's stronger, uh, filter, but again, not all systems are, uh, compatible with that.
I can, I'll ask.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris. Uh huh. Uh, okay, train, the company train, T R A N E, installed a replacement controller panel for the town office building outside lights. Uh, we got that done, uh, just before the election. Found out those lights have been off for about a year. So, um, that was, uh, something we wanted to make sure was resolved and, uh, that was taken care of. Uh, so the rec activities that we've had, we've had a Halloween event and a turkey trot event. They were both smashing successes. The Halloween event, I went, actually went to both of them. And, um, they did a great job. For their events, they put everything through Eastern Highlands in terms of the procedures they were going to follow and, uh, had that all vetted by Eastern Highlands. And for every one of our events, that's what we're doing. Making sure that we're setting it up right. If there's any food or, you know, how close people are, et cetera, et cetera. So again, they, I think they had, I thought it was a hundred and thirty-something or a hundred and forty-something people came to the Halloween event. And, uh, just under forty came to the turkey trot, which is what they expected. And that was held, um, down in the park. On Veterans Day, we had a small ceremony and, uh, that was very nice. Again, with social distancing, again, checked out by Eastern Highlands. Uh, and I wanted to thank the registrars of voters and poll workers and volunteers for the extraordinary job that they did for the November third, twenty twenty election. It was, it was truly extraordinary. And, um, they, uh, walked out of here at about eleven fifty, uh, that night and had everything pretty much done. So. Uh, we also need to add to the agenda, the filling of a vacancy created by the resignation of Barbara Zulik on the Babcock Library Board of Directors. So can we have a motion to do that? And that would be.
Why don't you wait until new business to add it?
Okay, we'll wait until new business. Thank you anyway, Bill. All right, uh, here for boards, commissions, committees. Moving on, acceptance of minutes of special meetings of, uh, October nineteenth and November seventh. Can we have a motion for the meeting of, uh, October nineteenth?
I will make a motion for discussion purposes.
And I will second that. Discussion?
Yeah, um, I'd like, uh, item F under number eight to include that I nominated Michael Zambro for selectmen.
Um, there was no, there was no second to that motion.
I'm aware of that, but I'd like it to indicate who I nominated, that there was not a second for, for transparency sake.
Normally, we don't document a motion that isn't complete.
Um, I've never seen it done that way, Catherine.
Maybe you should look at the E O Smith minutes. I, I saw it done several times. Um, that's fine.
I, I.
We'll, we'll note, we'll note that Michael Zambro is one person's name that you put up there. Not a problem.
That's the only correction I have.
Okay. Um, okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. How about the minutes of November seventh?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Review and discuss Town of Ashford COVID nineteen policy. Um, I cannot name names because these are employees. But I can tell you that in the past few weeks, we have had a situation where an employee was exposed to someone who has COVID. We have had multiple tests that were, uh, performed, uh, ta- taken by multiple people here. Uh, initial tests, um, of some of the people who were exposed outside of here. Um, or the, the person who was exposed outside of here, what happened is, uh, the person that they were exposed to, uh, not indirectly did not have COVID at first. A third party did, and that's how this all came up. Then when the, uh, second party, uh, was tested, at first the test came back negative. And then what was discovered is that, uh, through additional exposure, the test came back positive. And not only.
Would you repeat that last part, Catherine?
The, we have had, uh, someone who has been in direct contact with someone who has COVID. It happened over a series of events. And unfortunately, some of these, our employees have had to be tested multiple times because of it. So, um, as a result, uh, we have that employee is working from home. And we are waiting the final test results on that one. But we do know that it's in like all likelihood, they will be positive. So when we talk about opening up town offices and we talk about social distancing in here, it's a pretty impossible situation to manage. We're even having difficulty managing it when it's not here, in here. So as soon as we have someone who has COVID, everybody needs to get tested. We have to do contact tracing and that means we don't have backup. We just honestly don't have another set of people that can come in here and work when those other people are out because they get quarantined. We also cannot have them all work from home because they won't have access to the things that they need to do their job. They're also not supposed to do work using their own phones and their own computers. So we have a limited number of laptops. So that's the world we're living in, in here. And the people in here are wearing masks when they're, when they're walking around this place. And, um, and when we're having, we've now turned over to having what we call teams, teams as a technology. We're having teams meetings, um, so that we avoid contact as much as possible. We certainly have, you know, we certainly have face-to-face meetings, but they are at a distance. And they are with masks all the time. We also have a situation, um, even down at the transfer station where they weren't wearing masks than they were supposed to be. So we are doing the very best that we can protect the people who work here and the people we interact with. And that's not just the people that come to do business here. It is the people that people, we live with. So I get it that people want town offices open because it's. So I get it that people want town offices open because it's nice to be able to come in here and talk to people face-to-face and conduct your business face-to-face. But we are doing everything we can to make it so that we can, can help you get your business conducted, work, do, using the workarounds that we have. We have a window out there, we have a table out there, you can get papers signed out there, you can get papers notarized out there. So it's a matter of just making sure that we know that that's what you need. Now, Bill or Paul, do you have something you want to add to that?
Well, I, I'd just like to, I'm, I'm also getting, as you probably are too, Catherine, I'm getting more and more inquiries from people about if we have plans to open and if they are what they might be. I've also heard from a number of our board and commission members that they feel that they're working at, in a, in a condition that's not conducive of getting done what they want to get done and doing it through Zoom or however they happen to be doing it. And, you know, the situation that the state is in right now with the second surge and the numbers still increasing by very large numbers on a daily basis.
Yes.
I don't think anybody is expecting any immediate action. But I, I do get the feeling from people that they'd like to know that, that we understand and we sympathize with, with their concerns and that we are looking forward to a future date yet to be determined to reopen either on a partial or, or a complete basis. I mean, they cited to me about, about the school operating on a limited capacity, that it's working successfully with the library, that there are other towns that are, that are starting to open up also.
Okay, so let me tell you how it works in the library. Let me tell you how it's being done in the library. The library has hired their own cleaning service. And the library, every scene, well, actually, I should say, they're having their people clean. And the, every surface is wiped down every day. The floors are mopped twice a week. When I say every surface, I mean the actual shelves are wiped down with a disinfectant every day. Everything there. Now, they own, they don't have a ton of visitors every day. They do not have the number of people we have coming here, particularly, I'll say, for gun permits, for transfer station stickers, where we go down to the window and we take care of that. So that's what they're doing there. They're cleaning their own bathroom. And they only have, what, they have three people working there when all is said and done. And they have maybe, maybe max 20 people come in a day, maybe. I don't even think it's that. They certainly make arrangements to take things out to them. So it's not the same scenario as this building. And I can tell you this, I have talked with the Boy Scouts, I've talked with the librarian who wants to have some programs down in the hall, I've talked with Park and Recs who wants to use Norton Hall for some other things. And they all understand that this is not the time to open and we don't have a date right now. We need to watch what's happening out there to be able to even come up with a date. So we're not, we're not saying we're going to project a date in the near future, we just don't know right now. And right now, we have a significant uptake in cases. We went up, what, four cases in the last two weeks? And the towns around us have gone up even more. Wellington, what, how much did Wellington go up? I gotta look at the numbers here. So I don't know, Bill, if you have that information?
I, I read the Chronicle. I, I know the numbers are going up. I monitor it closely. I'm not arguing with you or looking for an argument, Catherine. I'm just trying to relay to you, I'm just trying to relay to you some of the input that I'm getting from citizens of town. And they're not saying open up tomorrow, they're not saying let's set January 1st as the date. They're just saying, what are your plans? And I, i- i- if you would allow me to finish what I was saying, one of my suggestions would be that in this month's citizen, that we give an explanation by the Board of Selectmen of exactly what we're, what we're doing now and what our rationale is why we can't open right now, but that we are looking forward to either opening up in the future and to set a date when it's, when it's possible to do for a reopening.
Well, we're not coming to be, we're not.
I think people would appreciate the fact that, I mean, I, I just don't think people realize or understand everything that we are doing or the perplexity of, of, of the situation we're in right now.
Okay.
With a town that has more staff than we do, it's somewhat easier to operate. When we've got a one or two-person office operating, if one or two of those persons gets infected, as you had pointed out a couple of meetings ago, the potential there is to close down that town hall entirely without people even doing any work that they're doing right now.
Correct. And I've gone before the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed to clarify that. I did that very quickly. We have already planned to put something into the Ashford Citizen for next month. So, but we cannot, you know, we're going to say, we can't project a date at this time because it's impossible to project the date. We miss working with people directly. And we want people to know that, just, you know, it's just not possible right now. What we do is we do, we actually go outside to interact with them. I know we went down and met a new family in the parking lot that wanted to dump a transfer station sticker and some other things. So the town clerk, Chris, and I all went out there to give them, to provide them with what they needed and to, you know, make our faces known and see who they were and welcome them to town. It's the best we can do and we're trying to do it. So I'd like, I would like people to know that we're not just sitting in here like we're sitting in some closet and we're not going to come out or, or whatever. This is something where we actually have to do this right now. So, and we had to be so very careful with even the.
I think on a monthly update, if we can put something in the citizen, because that's our best means of getting to as large a number of people as we can in town, we should be saying that. And, and let people know what we're doing, what we can do and what we can't do at this point.
Okay.
That's all my point is. And I believe that's what Paul's point is.
And Paul, your point was that you wanted us to open?
That's correct. However, I'm gonna, I, I completely understand what you're saying, but there's a, a lot of holes in that and, and for a million reasons I can come up with. One of them is, is that, I, I don't know what anybody's, what that person's exposure was, but people, when they leave that office every day. Well, but when people leave your, their, that building every day, I'm gonna venture to guess that they don't go home and hide behind the door there either. Some may, that's entirely possible.
Let me clarify. Let me clarify. There were at least people, three people that, had there been a COVID event in here or close to a COVID event, they would not, if I had let that person come into the office that was exposed, they would not have come to work. Out of fear, out of fear. They have families at home.
But there are people making that decision every day. That's a, the decision that each person individually or with their family needs to make.
And we do, and we do, as in response, we have a responsibility to each other in this building. And I can tell you that the people in this building have curtailed many of their activities outside of here. I know I have.
Everybody has, because we really don't have a lot of choice, but.
Well, we do because we know, we don't want to bring it into people who are already immunocompromised.
So something that you could maybe fix, I guess, is the best way to put it. On the town website right now, it literally says town buildings are closed and then it tells you that the offices, the offices remain, it says, all town offices remain closed to the public. Town offices are staff Monday through Wednesday and are available by telephone, email and US mail. Maybe we could just, you could just clarify that if somebody needs, so basically you're open to an appointment if you can meet outside.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yep, we'll do that.
All right. Because the way it looks right now, it just says you're closed. And I know, I know that you're staff, but it would be at least some, and, and I think to Bill's point, that would be a, a step toward, and like I said, and when I started in the beginning, we can't now with everything going on and the big uptick, you really, we're kind of going backwards instead of forwards. Again, my opinion is, is that we should have had some kind of limited opening previously, much like the banks did, and now they went backwards, so.
I, you know what? They went backwards because people got sick.
I don't know what happened at the banks.
Okay. The reason, the reason that we went backwards is because we have an uptick in, in situations. Okay? That's why the state went backwards.
Right.
So, all right. So if I understand correctly, well, first of all, I will take a look at the website. I'll take a look at it with Sherry, et cetera, and we will look at it and, and Cheryl, and we'll look at it and make sure that it's, things are documented out there in a way that the public can understand our rationale, when, you know, how we truly interact. I, I understand what you're saying, that it's pretty cryptic in terms of what's available, what's not available, and we can do a better job at that. So let us go and do that. Thank you for the input. Okay with you, Bill?
Yes.
All right. Now I want to talk about our, our, the review and discuss the Town of Ashford COVID policy, the rest of this. Bill, have you looked at the documentation that we did for the employee COVID-19 positive step, step test procedures and return to work criteria? Because guess what? We don't have anything formal in place here and we need to get this formalized.
Is, is it in my box?
You got it like a month ago.
Well, then I read what I got a month.
We were going to look at.
I did get what we got a month ago.
We were going to look at it last time and you wanted to review it first. If you're, if, if it's okay with you, Bill, what I'd like to do is I would like to assure the employees that this, these are the procedures we're going to follow until these get fin, this gets finalized.
I have no problem with that.
Thank you very much. And then the next time we meet, we'll finalize them so everybody's really comfortable, so to speak.
Yep.
Okay. And if you have any changes or any other inputs or anything you think is in conflict in these, please let me know before that so we can kind of get them updated and then do a final review at our next meeting.
Can you have Chris, I know we have a new member of the Board of Selectmen now, could you have Chris send them to all of us so we just, to make sure we're all looking at the same thing?
That member has not been sworn in yet, but sure, as soon as that person's sworn Okay.
Okay, I will.
Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
Uh, tax refunds, we're under new business.
I have one.
Okay.
It's to David James Catering LLC, under Connecticut General Statute 12-129, and the amount is $90.25.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Discuss approval of the Natchog River Basin Conservation Compact Memorandum of Understanding, Understanding Given at the Board of Selectment Meeting of October 19th, 2020. Bill, if you'll recall, that was our last Board of Selectmen meeting. And during that meeting, you and I agreed that we were good with this conservation compact, provided that we had Wetlands take a look at it, let's see, Conservation Commission and Planning and Zoning.
Correct.
Lo and behold, that was a good thing to have us do. Lo and behold, all of those entities, except for the concert, Wetlands said, hey, this is fine. It was not. Actually, what we had was something that didn't give enough information about what we really needed to do, what the commitment really was. And when all was said and done, I went and did some additional research and ended up talking to someone named, first of all, Lenny Legori, and I talked. And he indicated he had somebody on his board, I think it's Carol Chase, who was also in agreement, there was a problem with this. And so I ended up talking with Jean Pillow, who was heading up the, working on the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding. And come to find out, the copy of the compact that we had was not the current one, it was, they were actually, they'd actually sent us a memorandum of understanding ahead of the contract and expected us to sign it. So, you know, she's been told, no, we won't. I did get some, more information from Carol Chase, who's working with another group. And so we have not signed it. We're waiting for the true compact so that we can see what it entails and what the commitments really are. So thank you for, for questioning it and having, you know, saying that you wanted to have those other groups look at it, Bill.
Yeah, I also had a, a couple of brief conversations with Lenny and I do appreciate his input.
Yep.
And I, so they're going to be sending us more information, is that what I heard?
Yes, we're not going, well, we won't be signing, we won't be looking at it till they give us the actual compact.
Very good.
You know, the one we had was a previous, a previous one.
Very good.
Okay. Discuss implementation of the beginning of the meeting process of the Advisory Ashford School Building Committee. On this one, Chris, if I understand correctly, what we're really talking about is the Board of Selectmen setting up the first, no, First Selectmen setting up the first meeting, setting a date for it based upon us polling the members of that committee to see when they're available and doing that as soon as we can. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. So Bill, that's the, that's the plan. And once they have that set up, then they have to pick a chair and lay out, you know, they already have the charge for the group. They need to lay out in general how they're going to attack it. And then they handle all the meetings after that. Does that sound right?
That sounds fine.
Good. Discuss formation of a capital projects review committee. So to, we had a, we had a committee, what do we have now? Chris, can you elaborate on that? We had one before, but now we need to re.
Whoever is First Selectmen usually appoints a committee and the committee is usually, it's static, it's somebody from the fire department, the school superintendent, public works, Board of Finance and the First Selectmen.
So if this.
We put it out to everybody. We put it out to all of those agencies. You know, if you want something in the capital budget, fill out the form and it will be reviewed by the committee and recommendations will be made to the Board of Selectmen to include in the capital budget.
And Bill, you remember the form and all that?
I do.
Yep. Um, I think I did ask for a little more space for people to fill in with the financing, some details on the financing for whatever they're proposing, because some things can be split between grants and other things and, you know, kind of get a sense of general amounts that would go to each. Okay, so Bill, I guess, under those circumstances, is it okay if we go ahead and get that started?
Yeah, um, can you just send out a, a list of who you're recommending to serve on that?
Sure.
Or who the different boards are in that? And just, if, I'll, I'll get back to you if I have somebody else that I suggest serves that might be helpful.
Okay.
I mean, I assume you're going to invite Wayne Fletcher.
Yep.
Chuck.
Yep.
I don't know from the school who, who might, I think John served the, the last time, but I, I don't think he's on the board anymore.
It'll be whoever, it's, it'll be whoever.
It's usually the school superintendent who submits.
Right.
The capital projects request. And he can, I think he's delegated before.
And it really should be him, shouldn't it? And then when it comes.
I think it'd be a good idea if it's him, but I don't remember ever being on one of those boards where I saw him there.
Yep, all the requests are signed by him, are submitted by him.
Well, I think we ought to invite him to serve on it.
I think so too.
Catherine, why don't you put a, a letter together that the Board of Selectmen is asking that they give us somebody, we can make recommendations. Can we move on this on, at the next meeting?
Yes. And that's not too late for us to start that, is that correct? That's in two weeks. Yep.
And, and if you want to refine that form or draft a draft of it, Catherine, just have Chris send it to me, we'll take a look at it.
Okay. And then if you could get it back to me with any changes that you think are appropriate, then we can get it out to them so they can plan. Okay. Very good, I'd rather not wait till the next meeting on that. And also, I expect that Chuck will, rather than him attending, he will probably delegate that to somebody on the Board of Finance.
That's fine. And, you know, I mean, if the chairman or superintendent elects not to serve on it, they, they're always invited to sit in.
Yep. Okay. Uh. We have Assessor's Recommendation on Award of Revaluation Contract. We had sent that to the attorney, Chris.
That's for quality.
Yeah, there was something, one of the things we wanted to make sure was that the, I know that I wanted to make sure of is that the amount per assessment factor was in there. Just to make sure that it is stated in the contract.
Yeah.
Chris, did we have anything else that we wanted from that other than for Duncan to get back to us? I had sent that note to Duncan.
Wasn't there a, a legal or legislative question that Tara thought?
It was, it was about getting out of the other contract?
Yes, and we wanted to have Duncan confirm that we were able to do that with no problem.
Yeah, based upon what I, based upon what I saw and what I heard, that shouldn't be the issue. I think it was that we were also not going through the, bear with me, the well, it's, it's, again, it wasn't going through NICOG, and so it's getting out of the NICOG arrangement, but the NICOG arrangement was expiring anyway. The other piece of this was that it's more than $20,000 overall. Was it 20,000 or 10,000? I can't remember the amount now.
20.
20.
20, I believe.
And we were, had not, not gone through that process. And it was that through the ordinances, that could be waived. It was a part of an ordinance, but the attorney was saying it could be waived. Because we had short notice on this for the NICOG thing. And in fact, we do need to get this resolved quickly because we need to get this, get started on this.
Yeah, I think I think the idea was we just wanted Duncan to confirm that we were on strong legal ground on, and see if he had any other concerns about anything.
We'll, we'll chase him down this week. He's been really good on a number of things. And I think this one maybe got put on the back burner while he was handling some other things. Okay. All right, before we go into executive session, was there anything that needed to be added to the agenda?
We have to, the library board appointment.
Okay. Bill, would you like to do that?
I'll make that motion.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chris, who do we have for the library board?
Just give me one
Motion passes. Who is it?
Just give me one sec.
Sorry, I couldn't remember either.
Catherine, while, while Chris is looking for that, I, while we've been talking, I've gone in probably three or four times through Zoom trying to get in. And it's still not letting me. Did anybody else go in through just dialing in the code number? CID number?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, and it worked?
Yeah.
Apparently, because you're here or there.
I'm there, I'm here.
All right, I don't know what's wrong with mine. I keep getting that same 10, 19, 20, uh, window.
Um, Bill, the other thing, if you just go, don't, don't click a link. If you just go to zoom.us and click join a meeting, did you try that?
Yeah, yeah.
Huh, okay. I don't know what to tell you.
Yeah, I wish you could share a screen so we could see.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
We have an email that was sent by Elizabeth Fitzroy, who is the Chairman of the Library Board of Directors. This is to inform you that the October 27th, 2020 meeting of the Board of Trustees, a motion was made and passed to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that Al Macaron fill the vacancy left by the resignation of Barbara Zulik on August 18th, 2020.
Bill, are you good with that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Okay. Now we'll be entering into executive session for the purpose of shortlisting the land use clerk applications that we've received.
Okay, so Kath, would you like to, would you like me to have people go to a breakout room for this purpose?
I think that would be a good thing. I don't know that anybody else wants to hang around.
Yeah, hey, John, Catherine, I was just gonna say I'm gonna jump off, so I don't know who else you want on there, but so then if you don't, you won't need to do that. So have a good night, everybody, and when I can figure out how to get out of this thing, I'll leave.
Paul, thank you for your input. Okay, we take it seriously.
I'll get you a note, okay, Catherine?
Yeah, that'd be good.
All right, all right, bye bye.
So Catherine, is it fair to assume that both Mr. Rupert and Mr. Gardner are invited into executive session?
Yes, of course.
Okay, what I'll do is pause the recording and I'm going to take out my earbuds. I'll be watching the proceeding, just wave at the screen and I'll, and I'll
I'll go like this.
Okay, sounds good.
I don't think I have to say anything in particular, right?
I've started the recording again.
Very good. So, John, we want to make sure that you're available sometime, you or someone is available next either Tuesday evening, starting at 6:00, or Wednesday evening.
To, this is for, for interviews?
Interviews, and we'll have
Evening, Tuesday is, Tuesday is much better.
Tuesday is much better? Okay, we're anticipating it's going to take about two and a half hours.
Okay.
When all is said and done. You'll need coffee.
I have seltzer.
Okay. Okay, do we have anything else for this meeting? Let's go to back to the
John, can you write it in for now?
So six, six o'clock on Tuesday, the 24th?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll
No.
No?
It's Tuesday, yeah, it is Tuesday, the 24th.
Yeah, it is Tuesday, 24th, sorry.
Yep.
I'll get you a Zoom link.
Okay. And do we have any remarks for the good of the board?
Stay safe, everybody.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Thanks for your patience tonight.
Good night, everybody.